Welcome to the South Whitehall Township meeting for August. And we will start today with a roll call.
All right, starting here. Matthew Mulqueen.
Here.
David Wilson.
Here.
Alan Toak.
Here.
Bill McNair.
Here.
Brian Height.
Here.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
We have six, which is sufficient for a core.
I would like to pledge allegiance. Let me just declare the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, long ago today, we have the Council on Planning, Working Group Recommendation Presentation. And we will have the subdivision review for 2015 practice report. And here are the rich arms during the roll meeting that have been changed coming into next month. So we will start and turn it over to Chris Ford. For discussion.
Good evening, everyone. This is Chris Rash. Thank you so much for having us here and thank you for your support of this process. Good evening, everyone. We do want to share, going through really quickly, some of the recommendations that come out of this process or about these rights. And if you wanted to take notes and give us feedback, which is what this is for. So if you want to take them, it's great if we prefer not to. And we also do up the X. So similarly, Robert will come around and he's like copy. All right? It's better when you're taking. All right, well, good evening. Thank you so much again. My name is Tony Clark. I am Senior Planner with Michael Baker and Max Hall. Here with my colleague, Christopher Rash. He's the planner on my team. We have been working for like some time with the South Whitehall Township to go through this working group process. And it's been wonderful to work alongside many of you, the township and folks behind you as well from the future. So tonight, we're here just walking through fairly quickly the working group process and where we end up. So if everyone has done the timing, this process happened on a fairly accelerated timeline. Wanted to move things forward so that we could meet, have a good discussion, and then we have a quick topic spread as we continue to move forward. So I think you'll be here. This is the process we went through tonight. We're at our meeting, recording out to all of you. And I'll just quickly review the process we went through. So our first meeting was really to introduce all working group members to the working group process. We heard from some of the folks at the pool, the board committees. We heard from these women engineers, from traffic analysis. And we really got a sense of where we were headed and what we went into the topics. So in our first meeting by topic, it was about existing conditions. And we really looked at the 2009 planning plan, as well as what has been done as the conference of their project has been moving along. And we asked folks to think about what was significant that they wanted to move forward. Our second meeting by topic brought in subject matter experts from the planning commission. And I know folks both on the planning commission, as well as folks in the audience and on the line, participated in these meetings. And they were really great to get some foundational understanding of best practices, as well as how our region relates to South Whitehall and its standing future. And then our third meeting for the topic were to pick up the recommendations that were initially identified in these two and begin to prioritize those, say, those people who want to carry forward for one today's half of the meeting, but also hopefully for consideration and for evaluation for the top fantasy. But tonight, this is where we are, at our concluding meeting. And I really just want to thank everyone who was part of this process, made the changes for their partnership. This was an intensive, intensive process. And everyone who participated gave a lot of their time, a lot of their ideas. And we really, I just want to thank them and on behalf of our team as facilitators that are working with the township to take care of time and information. So now we're going to start diving in. But first, we just wanted to revisit the guiding principles that planning codes have been part of this town plan process, our era. These are what we've identified as the planing conference, the planning committee. We wanted to select those. And then this is a little kind of apologies for the small title for the copy of the presentation and revisit our family. But again, something that the planning machine knows very well, the MPP, the municipal planning code guideline, what has to happen when the company is in a state. So again, this helps to guide us as we move forward. Okay, so into the good stuff. So we had five topics, as you are aware. And then of course, on would be a speed chapter. So we're going to go through by topic. So for housing, we just wanted to revisit and remind everyone of the guidelines. So this is a very broad direction from the MPP. And with our group, we really devoted this to start developing recommendations to be presented. So like I said, our first meeting, meeting number one, was about existing conditions. So here are some of the pieces that come up as key takeaways in that session. And I do want to just mention here, something that we used, that I think worked pretty well in our meeting, was a Google Jamboard. Basically, it's like a virtual, if you were in a meeting, grass, a lot of posts, it's, we put them up. Basically, it's that in a virtual space. So in order to illustrate kind of how our process advanced, that's why we're using Google Jamboard. Just some context for them. So these key takeaways were shared. We then used this exercise to prioritize the key takeaways that were discussed in the first meeting and how we want to get discussion before both LPTC and then how recommendations would start to be developed. So following this prioritization, key takeaway, alongside the LPTC, some of that experts. Housing recommendations for discuss, and there was a brainstorm that took place with all the working group members. So what you're seeing up here is the result of the discussion and initial thinking perhaps social recommendations for the housing for portion of the company. We then, at our fifth meeting, have both team ranked recommendations. So again, what you see up here is the top six, and that's what we'll be quickly walking through. Again, all of this is quite quick, so we can get to any questions, as well as hopefully some comments for working group members and their feedback. So the first recommendation that we've identified was around less grain and cluster development. And so something you're going to see as we walk through these fairly quickly is there's a lot of ways that these recommendations talk to one another, especially between the different topics. So less grain census also really related to resource protection, how to be preserved, natural resources, open space, and think about growth in a way that's sustainable for our and certain tools or actions that relate to the zoning code, updates on that front, potential extension, as well as ways to really preserve and impact a lot of the space that South Whitehall residents feel so strongly about and support so much. Next one. So we also discussed the word of the incentives, the second priority. And again, this came out of this session, which we want folks to be able to downsize in our community. We want folks, new families, to be able to come in and be able to live here, to have communities that are accessible. So we talked about things such as ADU, our accessory dwell units, our grading plan. Education as a key piece of this, understand welcome into a town hall, how it can be invested, as well as thinking about ways that, again, have a good running code to better understand how they could facilitate a quarter. We then also looked, and this directly speaks to the planning margin, because it wants to, it was about understanding that we are moving forward, there are different households, different living situations. And this goal, which relates again to a lot of what we just discussed, is how much development do we need and where should we be? So how does growth relate to water, sewer, how's it relate to a minimal space? So this really was a process aspect of the recommendations and better understanding what this looks like for the township. We also did destiny and customer representation, transfer development rights that came up in multiple groups. It came up with resource protection, it came up here. And again, it relates to some of that cluster we talked about in the early recommendation. How can we think about growth in a way that happens where there's existing infrastructure? And we can preserve or even enhance some of the assets that South Whitehall has. Again, these are very involved, complicated processes, and we recognize that. But this initial discussion was really about what could it look like here? What can we do with the tools either within our regulations or otherwise to potentially assess the facilitation? Connectivity and walkability was the next recommendation, really emphasizing the importance of being able to get places that we have been easier offered. But also obviously, yes, with safety. And that really felt like a little bit, would be a way to enhance livability and really bring folks here and have folks stay in South Whitehall. All right, sorry, that was a roll in. So next we're going to go to transportation. And I just also wanted, we were moving quickly, this is not time for all your questions. So thank you for running along by us. So again, the city guidelines for transportation are laid out here. And when we got into the transportation discussion, we were thinking about, again, the existing conditions. What do we, what are the takeaways from looking at the 2009 content, the 2019 update? The data that's existing that we have, these are some of the takeaways that come up. Then we again did a prioritization and looked at where are we going to be? What is the, what are the top priorities to help for our recommendations? So again, here is just like the initial brainstorm, which we leave about a planning commission. Here are the recommendations that came out for the transportation update. And once again, we really wanted folks to think through how do we prioritize and how do we move this forward in a way that makes sense for the township and this process? So this is how we prioritize the recommendations. And you can see there are 12 here. We do not have 12 recommendation sheets because we do not get to go through every single one and build them out. But this is the first start, and we have, again, the mapping commission and board commissioners and the community on how we have been going to work towards our town plan. And so here we, as we go to transportation recommendations, I also just want to quickly applaud all of the recommendations that are included to this template here. We really wanted to create a standard recommendations template to get some key aspects of these recommendations. So goals, actions, stakeholders, funding, implementation, and governance assistance. So the same are all recommendations. So this recommendation talks about a transportation plan. This was really, it was tied to multiple things. It was tied to how do we ensure we have priority transportation projects? How can we influence, you know, getting on the tip, getting on the regional transportation plan that fits the federal laws? And also it happens to be like mobility and connectivity come into play here. There was also the question, and this still stands as a question, is the transportation plan, is your own document or is it a federalized contract? And so I think that's highlighted there with your key actions, because we want to recognize that probably is still a common discussion for the group. And again, we go into where we're zoning. I think there's going to be a lot of zoning and additional map hours to be, from our process. Thinking about how it relates to the company, of the use of, understanding where we have existed, what is the essence of now? What will it look like as in the future, what's permitted, what's allowed by rate, what would you maybe have to think about getting, or is changing, and the ordinance for? So again, this was a lot about data, how do we get into it, what's there, understand where our pain points might be, and see how something like a tool like zoning can help us think about managing some of the transportation related impacts of the township is being. Again, something very important, we came up a lot of safety areas and identified we had crash areas to address. Time in the laps of the transportation plan, and again, having within the infrastructure to make our roads safer. Here, we really did talk about the concept of vision zero, zero pollution deaths, zero recycling stuff. And also trying to get into something like a capital improvement plan, that would help move and advance the safety, take investments further to something like a plan multi-year stretch. So we also picked up on multi-municipal planning. This was really in discussions like how does transportation, you know, is a regional issue, you know, it doesn't just go by borders? So how do we work alongside the other municipalities and understand where our swing points are? Where we could potentially collaborate and think about found ways to plan together? So this is really the main objective of this discussion. We also had a discussion, and I was on the road throughout all the session, about an actual study. Recognizing that the national study and the possibility of having impact needs the large undertaking. Understanding that it would definitely be an education for folks to understand what it is and why it's beneficial. So we want to think of the working group component in here to really highlight and ask for serious consideration of going down a path. And we're seeing, this is our first, but definitely not our last show of the official map. So how do we use the official map to weather funding, to show our business priorities, budget? And what's some of that helps us to build that jet sheet and vision for moving mobility and multi-vital projects? All right, I'm going to hand it out to Chris, watching through community facilities, please, please.
Thanks, Tom. Again, my name is Christopher Rash. I'm the planning associate, not the public facility. We'll review the facilities and add community facilities to our process. Again, here are our guiding principles, or guidelines from the MPC to community facilities. The MPC actually groups facilities and any facilities together, but for our margin process, we split it two in half in order to make sure either that short change, but it allows us to have a more focused discussion. And as we've been saying, our first meeting focused on reviewing the 2009 plan, reviewing existing data, and really discussing existing conditions within the township. And whether this standing out is significant or important for us to keep in mind as we move forward and go our recommendations. So you see there's some of the key takeaways, pretty wide ranging, from parks to EMS services and anything else. Beginning of meeting two, we prioritized these key takeaways. And this really helped us guide our discussion, speaking with SMEs and subject matter experts at LPTC in order to make sure we were spending proper time on what was important in township. And with LPTC, we took the time to review, like we said, our most important takeaways. And we discussed our, some of the best tools and best practices in order for us to help create effective recommendations and balance out our ideas with the SMEs of LPTC. And as all the other groups did, we ranked and prioritized our recommendations in order to make sure we were spending the most time as possible on our most important and highest priority recommendations. And for community facilities, the top recommendation was to maintain school district relationship for shared facilities. Some of the key goals here were to mostly formalize the, formalize the relationship, whether that be through a document, to make sure we're clearly defining roles and responsibilities. And this could be seen as a way to further community programming, even look for additional partners. And just so far, it was seen that this is a great success for the township and something that we want to make sure sustains in the future. Secondly, we want to ensure consistency with parks, recreation, and open space plan. That the plan is going to come after the town plan update. We want to make sure that we're giving a good base recommendation for this plan to follow through, build out. And we obviously want to make sure that these plans are coordinated with one another so that we're not overstepping and just making sure that we're considering the proper partners, proper leaders, and township strategic funding sources in order to maintain consistency across all plans. Finally, to consider facility connections when we're doing developments, just to make sure we're not spreading the services too thin and to ensure equal access amongst residents to all of the facilities, parks, EMS, fire. And to also align a lot of our other goals in other groups to encourage community, to encourage walkability and sidewalk access. And, you know, discuss what is more connected township will look like when it comes to community facilities. Funding, or not, maybe not funding, I remember, there might be another one. But to consider opportunities to acquire land and structures for additional community facilities uses. This would involve inventorying areas of the township that may be in need so that we can see where the gaps may be, whether it be park system, offers between developments, and any buildings that may be repurposed for community centers, and how we're going to maintain existing facilities. And again, building off some of the other groups, making sure that we put our community facilities recommendations on the official map. This is a good way to carry forward some of the recommendations, to make sure that they're being properly communicated. And this goes along with a lot of public education efforts, to make sure they understand the process and they understand the importance of identifying, prioritizing opportunities on the official map. Finally, we want to make sure we're continually assessing service needs and service areas for priority, and as a police. We want to make sure we are working with the fire commissioner, hall chief, police chiefs, and everybody to make sure that they have a need to keep the township safe. This can be anything from equipment to, again, service areas, making sure we're not spread too thin. And we're going to hopefully look to address the ever increasing need for volunteerism in the township to make sure we're able to recruit volunteers and able to retain volunteers in the township. That leads us to community utilities. Again, the MPC doesn't break these up, but we see them as vastly different. And in order to properly give time to things like stormwater sewage, it's our choice to break them up into different working groups. Again, when we evaluated the 2009 plan, some existing data and current conditions here. Originally, at the beginning of the process, it started in 2019, understanding where we are in terms of current capacity and our key takeaways from the existing data are shown above on our jamboard. And so these were prioritized, and we discussed with some of the best experts from LPTC, what is most important to the township? How can you help us build recommendations to address our key takeaways? And here are some of the recommendations that were discussed with LPTC. They gave their advice on tools we could use to achieve our goals and to make sure our recommendations are effective and well thought out using best practices. And again, before we use our time to dive deeper into some of the recommendations using the template, we wanted to make sure we were spending time on the highest priority issues, which would be the facilities in the township. And it was cited amongst the group that evaluate invasion septic systems and invasion actions of paramount for the township. You could better utilize the current process of inventories, existing septic systems, you know, have a more universal inspection system. It's called GIS plotting by age, so we can better anticipate where any failures may be in the future. And who can partner with us, you know, private developers, private companies, as we look to inventory and have a better understanding of where potential problems may arise for septic systems. Next was looking at Act 537 and Act 167 within the township. And this goes along with understanding our current capabilities, how much we have left to properly grow. As we grow, we want to make sure, again, we're not pushing up against our capacities for sewer, the stormwater. We want some of these key actions to be a feasibility study, Act 537, since the last update was on time, you know, in the 1990s. How can we explore cooperation in adjacent municipalities? Or to make sure our projections are accurate that everybody else, and to consider incentives to help for developers upon maintenance and expansion. Just on transportation, we explore the benefits of capital improvements plan when it comes to utility facilities. Not only maintenance of existing systems in those projects, but also anything that will come for system expansions. Again, GIS can be used to help increase public understanding of where these projects may arise and what their timelines can be. And then we really want to build on the old line, the 2009 plan, which is, again, to explore the benefits of community utilities capital improvements plan. And these, this goal tied into a lot of other goals, so it wasn't built down as much. It's to evaluate growth areas, to ensure community stability in this plan. It's pretty much a broad way of saying everything else that we've said already. To make sure that we are following our capacity, we're not growing too fast, we're not stressing our utility systems. We want to reevaluate 2009 growth areas when we go make the new, the new map to make sure that some areas may no longer require growth areas or some may be more important others. One that always came up through the process as it relates to utilities was the area of very rich, as being on everybody's mind. And finally, a bit of a newer utility that is not included in the MPC is a broadband connection, high speed internet, and 5G access, and looking at its expansion within the township. How this will look in the township as we look to a future that is more teleworking, more cable cutting. We want to make sure we can provide service options to everyone in the township. And hopefully, in the future, 5G is more widely available. And this breakdown would help us look at who can be partnered with certain service providers. What's available in terms of state and federal programs? And how can we provide additional incentives to private service providers to make their own extensions in South Whitehall Township? Finally, lastly, for community utilities was considered green infrastructure efforts. This is a good way to naturally mitigate utility stresses, specifically stormwater. Have to be, make sure waste material is diverted from things like streams. We can keep in mind better trash collection practices, and maybe increased composting efforts ways to naturally mitigate some stresses on the utility system. That open it back to Tom.
Great, so we're hitting the home stress, so don't worry. Recent protection, this is our final, final area that we looked at. And again, as folks are aware, the planning commission and the community resource protection covered agriculture, natural reserves, and historic materials in the MPC. So again, like I've shared, our process, these were the, these are some of the key takeaways that we came upon after our denouement of existing conditions. And then again, we wanted to prioritize key takeaways to help direct the conversation. And you can see here how we're starting to see the importance of preserving, protecting, the funding aspect, which will see show up in the recommendations. And then when we started our organization brainstorm, again, we're seeing lots of overlaps with some of the things we discussed previously, the official map, and other ways to really tell the story of the township to emphasize the importance of protecting the resources. So when we got to the point of breaking new recommendations, we ended up with these top six. And I'll dive into them. Um I think some things, there are a lot of recommendations of brainstorming because we came up with six and I think we really spoke to how often they intersect with one another, how they build one another. So the top recommendation was preservation toolbox. What can be actionable documents that if you understand, if you to really um engage with and also gets folks engaged in their options for preservation, whether it be for natural resources or agriculture. This toolbox seems to have these chapters for the three different sections of resource protection. And will really be a way to build education, but also build action around preserving resources and also preserving the historic resources of the community as well. The second was finding sources tied in directly to the other people box that you're thinking about as a lot, where is the money coming from? And this is really um what this recommendation was about. Again, there's a big aspect of education here, especially considering that um some of the processes, there will be a learning curve thinking about the earnings and tax for natural resource protection or other funding options. So this um this particular recommendation is really tied into the first one, and that's implementing mechanism of the toolbox as well. Again, we see our official map come coming into play once again, and that's because um we really were able to see that after the two thousand nine town plan, we saw that township quickly and created the twenty ten official map. And I think that really showed us that it's really a near term and quick priority that could be moved forward as a result of updated town plan, which means things like census areas and um we have historic structures like farm. Um also acknowledging the journey through my head, really cultural and natural resource in. We also talked about historic preservation and historic resources in the sense of adaptive reuse and the preservation of historic structure. How can we also think about some flexibility to make reuse an easier option for folks, whether it's a design code or thinking about financing mechanism? So again, something that ties in obviously directly to the work of the planning commissioner um and then leverage it to see um how to move forward and help preserve and also be creatively about destruction button. And that's um we are made of three. Uh thank you for for allowing the opportunity. We really want to thank the work of the members, want to thank the town for that. And we also hope that there's time for the planning commission would like to hear comments and if the members have any questions.
Thank you, Hannah, thank you, Chris. Michael Baker, Hannah, this has been very good as uh if you should keep with this timeframe. With all meetings that we've had, they've been very, very strong doing that, that is appreciated. And we have time for a few questions. Anybody?
Yeah, I have a question. Um this is middle housing. Um you want to give a brief overview of what that means, uh going to understand about middle housing?
Sure, so it's a very broad term. I think it's also um if you guys are more familiar with the term workforce housing. So it's housing that is really accessible to folks um in our community members like police officers, teachers, nurses. Um it's seen as a way to enter the community. Um it's not necessarily subsidized housing, such as the four full housing, such as like the some tax dollars or state dollars. But it um is meant to meet the needs and it's a very big gap to the Lehigh Valley. And the Lehigh Valley planning commission has talked a lot about how there is a lot of housing on the very upper ends. And then there's, there's obviously a need for a low income affordable housing, but there's not really a strong market for little housing after long, which it, you know, the exact numbers depend on the community. Um so I won't want to speak directly to those numbers herself, I felt, just to do a bit more analysis. Does that help? Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any other questions? I asked about the transportation. Did you talk much about the, to me, the a lot of the fundamental problems we have in the relationship with Penn Dot, the road network in our local? Did you talk about how we interact and how we partner more with Penn Dot?
We we did have a good conversation, particularly with the Lehigh Valley planning commission, given that they also manage our transportation, our regional transportation metropolitan planning recommendation. And they um and again, we breezed through it, but especially the recommendations that came out of that thing with the Lehigh Valley planning commission, there was a lot of talk about how do we prioritize getting items on the tip? How do we think about, and they were very supportive of the concept of a transportation plan because it shows that the priorities are baked into where the township wants to go and can help with funding. Um and I also, I kind of, I know there are members of the community staff, they they want to add to that or I mean, I don't know if that would be, if that's possible.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We will be talking about this again later in the meeting uh after we do the uh the one subdivision review. As you said before, this comprehensive plan is the key working for the planning commission. Um so one of the responsibilities is people live here, work here, and people are property owners. And the the biggest thing that's come up is preservation of farmland and open space. Uh and keeping the township character the way that's a gateway to uh open countries and farms to the north of here. That's come up again and again in things that people have asked for. And another one that everybody has talked about is uh keeping traffic moving somehow. And how do we partner with Penn Dot to to be concerned uh with that? Uh and money, uh which that is also because Penn Dot controls a lot of that money and where it's not. There may not be enough money sources and that's one of the reasons for looking at, I guess, the two oh nine or if it's another potential source. There was some strength with that, I'm sure that the learn of the, of any other thing. Um so what we're planning to do with this is we're going to be having uh work group meetings uh coming up where we take the recommendations and the information that's come from the work that Michael Baker has has facilitated and coordinate that with the comprehensive plan from two thousand and nine to come up with an update uh to the plan uh to meet the requirements uh of the MPC. So we'll be talking about that a little bit more. Thank you. Is there anything else if they have someone on this? Just there's an extra copy if anybody else wants one to get.
And I just want to jump in. The big question, I think, for everybody is what's next? And Chairman McNair touched on it is we will have workshop meetings with the planning commission public will be absolutely invited and we'll go deeper into each of the topic areas and each of the recommendations and build those out into a comprehensive plan. So that's kind of the next step. There was a lot of information tonight. We'll have the presentation online. Get it tomorrow or Monday, um so you can review that. We'll hopefully have a recording. Um fingers crossed with technology. Uh but I do want to thank Michael Baker uh for helping out and getting us to this point and providing valuable information for us moving forward as the planning commission and township staff in developing this comprehensive plan. Also, thank you to everybody that was involved. Um your input is helping to shape this comprehensive plan. Uh so thank you to everyone for that as well.
Okay. Good. Should I go back a little bit? Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Hannah. Uh we move on now to the uh I was talking to the agenda, I think three is the important fifteen minutes. I think we have one from June seventeen. Maybe it was uh are there any um comments or changes to be made for that? Here, now, so here. So it was uh Brian and now um for that um
Let's start at this. Matthew Melqueen. David Wilson. Alan Tobler.
Hi.
Bill McNair. Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly. Motion pass from six to zero.
That's it, we'll do the July and August meeting hopefully next one.
Yeah, I I didn't complete the July and this one I hope to be really short, so it should be a quick catch up.
Okay. We'll move on to the subdivision review. Back there, we wanted to be building addition at forty eight fifteen Crackersport Road. The plan is twenty twenty one, one oh four. Limited quiet plan review. The meeting will have a staff presentation, applicant presentation, courtesy of the floor, and the mission decision. Right, everyone, do review for this year.
Okay. Got, oh, you got it, good. All right, this is an application to further develop the property located at forty eight fifteen Crackersport Road. The plan proposes a thirteen thousand five hundred square foot building addition to be located at the north end of the existing nine thousand eight hundred and eighty two square foot building and a nine hundred fifty square foot reduction in pervious surface on the site. The subject property is served by public water and sewer and is zoned industrial, commercial, special height limitation IC one. Triple net investments sixty four LLC is the owner and applicant. Previous consideration in twenty twelve, the Board of Commissioners approved major plan twenty ten one oh seven, which was covering transport, uh proposing the raising of the one story masonry building that had previously existed on site and construction of additional pavement for trailer staging and parking at forty eight fifteen uh Crackersport Road. Two thousand eight, the zoning hearing board granted a building separation dis variance for the placement of the security guard shack. Two thousand six, zoning hearing board granted use interpretations and acknowledged certain nonconformities. A special exception use approval for parking lot paving and building renovations. And two thousand four, Ward Trucking submitted an application which never advanced beyond uh never advanced beyond the planning commission. Two thousand three, zoning hearing board granted permission for temporary storage yard for building materials. And in nineteen sixty eight, the zoning hearing board discussed an appeal involving yard provisions and the construction of state inspection garage for a trucking facility at that time. So the community development department recommendation is the department recommends the planning commission recommend preliminary final plan approval to the Board of Commissioners, subject to the applicant complying with the following conditions. One, if deemed to be necessary, the applicant shall execute subdivision improvement, security, maintenance, and indemnification agreements acceptable to township and its solicitor be executed. That sufficient security in a form acceptable to the township be posted. Such security shall be available for draws, presentation, no further than sixty miles from township's office. And evidence of necessary insurance coverage be provided prior to the plan being recorded. Two, that the applicant addressed to the sound, to the satisfaction of the township engineer, the comments of Mr. Anthony Talarida as contained in his review letter dated August thirteenth, twenty twenty one. Three, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of township order and sewer engineer, the comments of Mr. Jason Newhart as contained in his review dated August eleventh, twenty twenty one. Four, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction township geotechnical consultant, the comments of Mr. Chris Taylor as contained in his review dated August fourth, twenty twenty one. Five, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of community development department, comments of Mr. Greg Adams as contained in his review dated August thirteen, twenty twenty one. Six, that the applicant addressed to the satisfaction of the public works department, the comments of Mr. Herb Bender as contained in his review dated August ten, twenty twenty one. Seven, if deemed to be necessary, that the applicant obtains a letter from Lehigh County Conservation District approving the soil erosion and sedimentation control plan pursuant to section three, twelve, thirty nine E of SALDO. Eight, that the applicant obtains a letter from P A D E P approving the sewage facilities planning module or exemption thereto. Nine, that the applicant complies with the recommendation of the Public Safety Commission as contained in the Fire Marshal John France's review dated August four, twenty twenty one. Ten, that the applicant complies with forthcoming recommendation of Landscape and Shade Tree Commission. Eleven, that the applicant addresses all issues and obtains all approvals deemed necessary by South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners insofar as matters pertaining to the township's water and sewer service are concerned. Twelve, that the applicant reconciles all open invoices for township legal and engineering services to the plan being recorded. Third, and thirteen, that the plans are to be revised and deemed to be clean prior them to be prior to them being presented to the Board of Commissioners. The planning commission's soft deadline to act on the plan is September thirteenth, twenty twenty one. The Board of Commissioners's hard deadline to act is October thirteenth, twenty twenty one.
And I believe there will also be a fourteen
There will.
requirement regarding zoning requirements.
And we can discuss that. I can add that at that point.
Okay. Okay, uh that's what I was hearing from the applicant.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Chris McLean from the town of Benson, Bovet. Good to see some of you again after quite a few years since I've been here. Uh with me this evening is Dominic Baker from Triple A investment sixty four. Uh we also have a few other folks here this evening that have made a good representation. We have Rusty Johnson with the U S Express, the most user of the site. Marty Smith from Kenny Blenson Engineering can talk about Bovet as well. And John Fisher from Van Associates. Uh we appreciate the favorable recommendations from township staff and the engineers. Uh generally, all the comments are a little applied uh and as well as the recommended recommendation uh that great is outlined for everybody. Uh so without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Johnson to talk a little bit about the operations on the site and to answer some of the questions.
Good evening. Um so I believe there's a few questions in regards to uh the asset that will be on site. Be approximately twenty. We will have security available twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, four hundred and fifty five days a year, and that will happen at that time. Um we have done about fifteen of those twenty people being canceled, about five of them being canceled. Remember, trailers you would expect to see a day, or remember trucks you would expect to see a day with something proximity of a mountain or city trucks. And then there was some discussion, perhaps possibly in Iowa on the first instance, period of times. We do have a description on Iowa on the pass gate. Our one subsidiary, as what we call an AP one. So it's an auxiliary cover, you can sit down and restrict the truck from actually handling. They're using batteries or power that just keep their heater for other programs. Uh the question was averaging the state of equipment, uh obviously as a business we determine maybe too much possible, so um I would say they didn't brought that to me in three days. Obviously, that would depend on customer use and um the burden means on that. A list of amenities that you can expect or a driver can expect whenever they go to that facility is a nice shadow, a place to watch some TV, take a camera break, uh be a secure place to keep their truck or their trailer while um they're on that break, but also places to bang machines, a washing dryer, anything of that nature. If I had to describe the busiest time, if you're going to have trucks and out of that facility at said all the times of the day, but primarily more so I would look at the evening, afternoon hours for more of the units to come in town. So we are, obviously, our style company, uh what that is, is a network where we will also use dedicated folks, which is more regionalized. Uh so we operate dedicated operations and work for PA, Bethel PA, things like that. Um and also in Shippensburg, where we utilize this uh facility, so I don't maintain our program to help assist our drivers as best as you can. Do you all have any questions or anything that I can help you answer?
I'm curious, you you say you're having, you're gonna have twenty five mechanics and five?
It'd be about twenty, um close to, there are probably fifteen mechanics working at twenty four. Pretty, pretty shit, but twenty-four hours a day.
You are available here?
It would be local, yeah, it's certain. Yep, you're welcome.
What are the days of operation for mechanics?
So, we are, um, I, that's something, um, I'm thinking that I'm making for drivers, but for our office and the firm, too. So, a schedule which could look like four to ten hour days, or a person should send me to the plant today. Might have the other side, you'd be in my state through Saturday. Um, that would be more determined, uh, further on.
Is the garage exclusively for U.S. Express, or do you have other carriers or other?
It would be for U.S. Express and our subsidiaries, so we have a table of, uh, transportation in Mississippi, who's under the U.S. Express umbrella. We also have another, um, that runs under a same D O T number, it's bearing, they are very looking trucks, but.
And do you anticipate having tow trucks drop off, breakdowns?
I wouldn't say any breakdown, um, but most certainly could happen.
Do you have a dedicated area on their lot for dropping tow-ins or?
Yeah, well.
Just an available space, it can go anywhere.
Yeah, it's.
To be, sure, to be fully transparent here.
Yep.
I worked for Pennske Truck recently for twenty-six years.
Okay.
Something's quite much, you'd be like, how is he?
No, I really appreciate the, the question. Uh, I think it's very important to have, um, a very big flow for, for trailers to be staging, or making trailers will be had, uh, or personal vehicles parking. All those things are going to be key elements, and, um, maybe very influential may change as, as the time progresses, so what we may see on one side of life would be, um, drop load of trailers, could change into maybe, um, where we stage the entities, but all this will be fine, um, as we continue to see the impacts of our posts.
Okay. You get trailers, and I notice on your plan, front of doors, it's like fifty feet into a, to a space, and how are you going to maneuver a seventy-five foot vehicle if there's something in that first space there?
Are you on the west end, or what?
On the north side of the building.
On the north side, so.
My opinion, I'm just trying to opinion what's engineering, um, stuck in here. On the north side of the building, let's just tractor, that's, that's driving for truck repairs, so you're not asking the trailer in that space.
So, you're, uh, you got eighty. You got eighty feet of space in the garage, so.
Yeah, if you look at, looking on the, on the plan view, and it's on the screen now, on the north end of the, or actually, we have a, 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 north is to the left side of the page.
Yeah.
So, on the east side, upper, upper, there's a drive-through canopy, there is the, so the tractor trailer, the guardhouse. Potentially driving into the canopy for some initial inspections, and also bypass lane for the truck to go past that.
So, the canopy is for, like a post-trip or?
For your.
I have a problem.
Yeah, for your, uh, inception, there's also a house in the canopy area.
Okay.
Along the rear of the building are the exact number of doors, uh, but the doors for tractors themselves, driving for repairs. Those are only getting along that narrow portion that you were asking about.
Okay.
On the west end, the bottom of the page, is the drive-through for full tractor trailer or truck.
Okay, yeah.
And so that's lined up with the access.
Right.
Um, the employee parking, which you can see to the right of that on the page, was studied such that a truck could maneuver around. I did prepare some trucking exhibits, uh, included here. Sold out of a page or two of those. But that can also show you, you know, maneuvering it out. There is enough space on-site for two-track tractor trailers stacked at the guardhouse, uh, before you get to road, so we want to get a guardhouse to carry it. We want the officers behind it. This is getting to all the internal movements yet, or maybe considering this could be provided in, the comments that requested, seeing the structures and movements. Uh, this exhibit here shows the tractor entering the site, stacking there, maneuvering through the canopy, ability for them to move around, exactly the trailer storage here. Car wash, truck wash, one, two, Crackersport Road. Uh, one of the other questions that had come up was, do you anticipate route of the trucks to this facility? Very exhibit, illustrating that, or, like, now, previously coming off three-on-nine at the, at the, at the, at the fourth, twenty-nine.
It's probably not near.
Take it to the, the west of the site, is the watching corner. Upper McCandie, the, 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 passing, or, or, truck traffic, along that portion of track, by the, from the border, two thousand feet to the border.
Right, the, the bridge is way.
Yeah, the bridge is way there, so, you know, we would anticipate that the other vehicles would continue to follow the path illustrated in the elevator, would be coming off point two, three-on-nine, um, and accessing the site from, from the start.
Okay, and, uh, would you be fueling trucks on-site, or, uh, is that all on, on the road?
I believe it's all on the road, just, you know, as the same plan, not putting fuel stations on it.
Because my initial thought was the canopy, we look like a fuel line to be, that's why I wrote it.
Oh, yeah.
Some, some, some trucking companies have, like, a fuel truck, um, fuel out on site. We also have a truck stop, a little bit, kind of a little bit close to this facility as well, but it's also way mature, should be to get there, so, that's why I was, uh, wondering how to handle that, or if that's up to the driver, or wherever he's going.
Yeah, my understanding is the driver, you know, fuel, and fueling.
Okay, and, uh, my last question is, uh, how do you comply with the state law to remove snow from the top of vehicles? I know your other facilities have the arms that they drive under, are you anticipating happens on this location as well?
Um, not aware of that, so that, I can get all, most of.
I have to do it via.
Absolutely.
Because I, I notice your shipping service has it in Florida, Illinois, so.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
All my pleasures, thank you.
Do you believe in handling any other hazardous materials, um, tanking oil, uh, balloons, things like that?
I, I can, I can address some of that, and I'll speak to, to some of the more specifics, it's, you know, there's, as far as handling hazardous materials, there's not many materials that are in the trucks that are coming on site, this is just a place for, if there's material in the trailer, it's staying in the trailer, trucker resting, and that's it. Hazardous material, you know, and those associated with working on any engines or something like that, where you have, or, you know, whatever you have, that, you know, then all, on the vehicle there is, uh, there's.
Do you have a spill control area where storing the materials?
Yes, all of it.
Do you need?
Yes, that would be included, uh, whether shop, so anything that, um, is regulated or considered hazardous, but have the city data sheets, but also spill container, you know, it's also available to them, um, and also available for, and taking hazardous material and stuff, that's not available.
Uh, are most of your trailers owned by you?
Yes.
And are they mostly garage trailers or referred trailers?
Drive.
Any other questions? Bring up one, the, uh, the, this one, we have done, we, we do not have any sidewalks.
Currently don't show any sidewalks along the front edge, is the, one previously approved plans that Mr. Adam Garper has, had to get on the waiver, deferral for that, the last time he built a plan. That was done over the site. So, the curbs are installed, in Crackersport Road, they're wide enough to, damage standard. But we're currently not showing any sidewalks on the.
Just to confirm, uh, currently with any installed curves, uh, the way the finding on the property meets township standards?
I find everything, that was done, we got, we got a lot of them.
I know what we've done in terms of sidewalk, um, I understand there's no attacking sidewalk on either side of the property, but we've been dealing, um, currently particularly on Grant Labor, it's more of a deferral, and we would like to see at least that sidewalk shown on the plan, so if you do call the deferral and it's shown on the plans.
Yeah, I think it would be reasonable to defer off, you know, the others, also, we're, you know, notice state, any, even just, there's no sidewalk out there, there's, just to our east, they'll, similar to our own road, you're like a long, to you, or to the street, near Slant Stop, as far as I can tell, what's up there. Don't forget, three-on-nine, so there's, yeah, plenty of places for anybody to go.
Is that a bridge you, three-on-nine?
Is that a bridge you, something?
And are the sidewalks intended to be installed on, by the parkman there, retirement facility, and that powers bill?
Unless.
There's some, maybe in the area.
It's not necessarily ideal, with the pedestrians near.
But there are pedestrians that walk on Crackersport. But they are better to have a nice sidewalk. You're open to the referral?
We are open to the referral, yeah. We should include that on this plan request for two and three years, plan, uh, that we can request that specifically on this, on this call.
I have a question for Greg, I think, so, two things, you mentioned that there's some zone issue there, and, um, is there anything that the Shade Tree Commission could do to make sure that would alter any decision you could possibly make tonight?
Let me start with the second one first, and the first one second. Um, unlikely, the, the trees that were required by Landscape and Shade Tree in two thousand six, was it, or eight, or, I, I forget when Covenant Transport came in, but they were put in per standard. And I visited that this morning, and they were all still there and alive and reasonably healthy. So, unlikely Landscape and Shade Tree require anything new. Back to your first question, and maybe Laura has a better ha- handle on that.
What was the first question?
What's the, what's the zoning, uh, Greg mentioned that there's a potential zoning issue?
Oh, it's not a zoning issue, uh, it's a clarification, um, so the previous owners, currently today in our zoning ordinance, the, um, motor freight terminal, um, the, the use is done by conditional use hearing. So, this actually was in existence prior to us, the township, making that, uh, a section in our, in our ordinance, so, um, the attorneys and I had conversations prior to this coming, um, to land development as to what is the current use. The current use is a motor, um, freight terminal, it's been, um, that way reported through different things, through Covenant and the other owners that have been there, it's been established. So, the next question was, would they need conditional use approval to move forward for the addition? And the answer was no, because we concluded the use is already established.
Absolutely.
And it was established prior to us making it a conditional use requirement. So, do they need conditional use to move forward for the addition? No, they do not, but I ask that that would be considered as a record note on, on the, a plan note, on the record plan, moving forward, that it's just, it's there for the record.
Yeah. That's great, thank you.
And with that also being said, I'd like to add that the existing criteria that is in our section for motor freight terminals, the, the approval of the use, that they're already in existence, that doesn't negate that they need to meet today's criteria, which is what they're working on now. They still need to meet the criteria that we have in our existing ordinance now.
Okay. And I think that Laura's comments were included in staff comments, which are incorporated into the recommendation by that reference to, to Greg's, so we understand that, and we'll get whatever information we need to get to Laura.
Prior to going to the Board of Commissioners for.
Yeah, if, if I can, you, you referenced the, another condition, we'd like to add condition fourteen. And it said, the applicant add a note to the plan addressing the comments of the zoning officer's review dated August sixteen, twenty-twenty-one, to the satisfaction of the zoning officer and township's solicitor.
I understand the note, and so what exactly are you, that note is saying?
She's almost written it for you.
I mean, you can, you work on it.
So, it's basically. Okay, but you're not looking for the note to include that in any range of, like, one through ten on your letter? Or are you looking?
No, the, no, just the huge.
Just, just.
The use has been established prior to, and then what it is now, these pretty much look pretty good, we just need some clarification. This is our asset, maybe you know, because this is a community feature, um, which is section is three fifty, dash forty-eight, M six, E two A, the plan is not really loading up. So, because it's certain in the ordinance that when you reach a certain amount, then you have to ship, provide more, so that's why I want, that one would be nice, if it could also be noted on the record plans, what is being proposed, so that, should more talks are needed at the time.
And that's all.
Right, now, I know, my oversight, not, there's one on the dot that pretty much, so, on the site, labeling, we've counted in our document, that motion, just to be good in the, on any, label and sign of view, whatever.
So, proposed addition for a few slides. Thank you.
And also, the landscape plan needs to be changed to, to move upper McCandie Township, South Whitehall. Okay.
So, I would say this, the plan, okay.
Greg gave you, deferral sidewalk is where the credit safe building used to be airport advertised, did they get a deferral? I know you guys do.
That's a good question. I, I, I think it was, and, that was during my timeframe, and it became traditional to do deferrals at that timeframe, so.
Also looking at, is that move the whole to garage door building?
Oh, yes, yeah, oh, that definitely was deferred.
And we're also putting sidewalk for the warehouse, on the house.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so sidewalk is definitely coming to the area.
Right, so it might be cheaper to put it in now, compared?
Now.
Since you have the concrete here.
Now, as, as we mentioned, i- it's typical now to show the, the sidewalk on the plan. Um, when I was out there this morning, it looked like it might be difficult to put the sidewalk in within the right-of-way between the trees and the curb. The trees are a little clo- they're at a strange distance, um, so you may have to put the sidewalk inboard of the trees, which might require a shade tree easement to be added to the plan. Uh, it's, you should, put it on the plan, let, let us look at it, and then we'll determine what needs to be done.
There will be for our tree.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you can stay on the sidewalk topic, uh, Mr. Talarida's letter, comment letter on page two, under D, traffic. Number six says sidewalk is required by Crackersport Road. Um, I know that the applicant is requesting a deferral typically.
Yeah, they got deferred.
It's the procedure in South Whitehall Township, that the applicant submit any deferral written requests, right, to be discussed and then recommended by the planning commission. If the planning commission is inclined to move this case forward, this matter forward, uh, I would suggest that there be a recommendation on the sidewalk deferral, conditioned upon a written deferral request, and in agreement, obviously, that the future sidewalk be shown on the plan. It would allow the plan to move forward, but could also procedurally provide the Board of Commissioners with a recommendation, uh, from the planning commission on that deferral request.
And that would also exclude the justification, why it should be deferred over it?
It would be a standard deferral waiver request, that's correct.
Thank you. And that certainly is. Is that what we want to do?
My, my feeling is there's sidewalks over in that parkland manager, there's sidewalks going on the housing flex building. There's sidewalk currently built on a major crack of the port DC three warehouses. And deferrals, I think you pull in on your credit, potentially credit safe and. Usually it's as our CD department understands that.
He's, we're showing the deferrals of sidewalk there. So you do see where the current deferrals are.
So that is in front of the credit safe?
Yep.
And as our community development department notes, pulling in referrals after a while can be.
Difficult. Yes.
I would be forward to getting them in now, but.
For deferring at this point, we defer everybody else along there. We could, it's a great idea to have it, it should be on the plan. I think putting one up aside off there is something not unusual at this point. And maybe down the road and it's just a burden, a financial burden on the company. But there is a lot going in there, but yeah, the rate that everybody else is deferred. So unless we're calling the rest of the deferrals, I'm not sure why we're forced to issue with this particular applicant. And we haven't put any of the, and we're not going to call them actually deferrals.
Well, then I think the directionally is we're starting to call in.
It, it certainly appears that it might be a good time to do that with the other sidewalks going in. And that's typically when we try and call them in is when there's other pieces that connect. So if this piece is to go in, then we would probably call it adjacent pieces. Is typically how we, how, how we handle things. Not that we do it a lot, but we did call in some sidewalks and it was, we were looking at adjacency and trying to close some gaps. So that's a rational reason for calling in sidewalks is if there's a connector. And then it also provides an opportunity for the property owners to go in together and kind of going together and save some cost by extending a larger project. Is kind of how we, we kind of approach it.
I guess, and how about across the street to the parkland, or parkland manor?
Parkland manor. Yeah, the.
The tower.
The tower, yeah.
That we required the, to install sidewalks there. Yeah, we did not defer on that one.
Which we don't show. So I have to update it.
Well, I guess.
I kind of tend to agree with putting sidewalks and now I know we just approved. Wondering if we did not defer it.
Yeah, I understand.
That's been our, that's been our. Recommendation.
Yeah, I was aware that there was sidewalk for that next. Well, yeah.
I, I think if we're going to do it, we should call in the rest of the deferrals. I also question the, the thing is, is we did the warehouses and that makes sense, but you can't get under the turnpike. I mean, it doesn't, this isn't going to make it much more walkable. It's going to, it's still going to be for the time being, for the foreseeable future. So sidewalk unused in front of their facility and nothing else, like it's not. Because if we were crossing back and forth, I'm just not seeing that this is going to aid during practice court duration and walking. Cause that's true.
Okay, then we're kind of at the point of, you know, I understand what you're saying. But we're also getting to the point where we're fully more, I guess. Let me see, above, I'm making a motion.
Hold on, if I will, if I may, they are required to install sidewalk. The motion should be to defer and then vote on that.
Okay.
That's correct. If, if the vote fails, they install the sidewalk. If the vote succeeds, they defer the sidewalk.
That, do you want to make that, I'll make a motion and provided that there is somebody else doing it, not that.
Well, there'll be a second.
Or is there a second?
I agree. It shouldn't just be a standalone, all the adjacent properties need to be called in, so it's.
And that's my suggestion is that we defer it now and then we call in all of these. We don't do it simultaneously, not that, yeah, we'll get around to it. We're going to make these guys do it, let's do it comprehensive, give them a deferral and then call in every one of them together. And to your point, that'll be give everybody an opportunity to get together, they can coordinate. And it won't be a choppy sidewalk, it will be a one big sidewalk that makes sense and not some choppy ground trees thing.
And I, I think that provides the opportunity for coordination. Because if we, like you said, they, these guys might put in and by the time we get to the right property owner, they may be done, but if we do a deferral, and I'm kind of just spitballing here. But if we do do a, a deferral on this property and then call in all the properties and have them coordinated, it gives them time for that coordination to happen.
Yeah, I'm not against them putting sidewalk, but I think it's just going to be a coordinated effort. Because frankly, if I don't met trucking, I'd say fine, we'll put a sidewalk in and that'd be done. It wouldn't necessarily be contiguous with. So why don't we defer it, but then get with all of these owners and have them put together a plan together that makes sense. And something that's comprehensive rather than just a check the block so we can get moving on the trucking term. Cause that's what's going to happen. That would be my preference.
How long after approval do they have to put a sidewalk in? Let's say they had, let's say it went through board commissioners, how long would it take? Cause there's a house built on my roof and still has sidewalks and people have been living in there for three years.
Yes. Took me a while to figure out what you were talking about.
It, it, part of their approval was to put sidewalk in and still, to this day, it still doesn't have sidewalk.
That's correct, because we, we granted them a conditional CO based on them installing sidewalk and told them to talk to.
Black Creek.
Black Creek to get that done, because Black Creek was doing work along their right of way.
So if we do something similar here.
So if it's not deferred, when they come to CO.
But it's contingent on us pulling in.
The only problem with that, and I'm, what you're saying makes sense, but if we don't defer it, then they're going to be pushing back the construction of their facility.
Well, they could get a conditional, like we did with the, that Greg's referencing. We gave them a conditional certificate of occupancy with the condition that they have to put sidewalks in to get the full.
It's the full CO.
Okay, well, that may make sense and, but it's incumbent upon the township in my opinion. To, to now have a work at this issue with the rest of the, and coordinate this effect with the, the rest of the owners along there and get a comprehensive plan. If, if we're going to require it, then let's make sure it's right, it's contiguous and we coordinate it at the township level. And if we give them, and if we give them the conditional, then we should have a clock ourselves too to make sure that they're not just taking this hand down the road.
Right, and.
The, the reason why I made that is because we can do all we can and still not get.
Cooperation.
Cooperation.
Yeah, yeah, you can, you can, except you can, these are all deferrals, you can call in all the deferrals, so they have to comply.
Yes, but they can stretch it out and we, we, this is one of the reasons why we said it's difficult. I mean, it's been a few years since we made some, called in some deferrals and some of these people have been balking to the point that we still don't have sidewalk in yet.
But I don't think that's, that, that, to me, that.
That's right.
Everything you just said makes sense, but I'm not sure why they're not complying with.
No, it's not.
It's not, they, we need to make it comply with this, you know, and I know that.
And I, I understand that the legal process does not, does not give us the right to say, you do it and they jump. They have legal rights and it, there's a process to follow through that. So yes, we can call in deferral. If they choose to contest it, no matter what you do, it's going to drag things out.
But I also think there's some honey here, I guess, if we were saying, calling them all together, maybe getting them all together, getting them all on the ladder and saying, we want to put in sidewalk, we want to get together. And there, there's something to be said about, I mean, that, that makes sense to people rather than just a random, hey, just what, we want a sidewalk now.
Then, then you're, you're absolutely correct, but once again, we can only go as far as we can go. And if one of those chooses to be not cooperative, then they, they can hold up everyone else. So I'm, I'm just saying, it's hard to put a deadline on the township when we have to rely on the cooperation of others. That's all I'm saying.
I just like to comment that we, we as a planning commission discussed that great line, I guess, two or three years ago. Because of this very issue, we waived or deferred so many that now we're talking about how do we call them in, when, what's the legal process? And it's great for a township to then begin that process and go through. And we as a board agreed that we would not do deferrals. There would be, if the city development, we're going to require this sidewalk, so even at the time of, of plan and construction, makes sense, gets it done. That's what we've consistently done. So I feel like we're wavering from the real path that we as a board have chosen.
And maybe that's the, the letter that goes out when we call in the deferrals. It says, your neighbor two driveways down is putting in a sidewalk. Here's their contact information, we're calling in your sidewalk, work with them to get a better look, linear foot price. Might be the way to, way to handle it.
I like the suggestion you made about the conditional CO too, because that, that holds them accountable rather than just picking it and then giving you a hassle like you guys would, like now for years, but it also drives the path of the process.
And one of the things.
I just think that, you know, if you're looking at practice court, it needs to be, it needs to be a comprehensive plan and not just, oh, whatever, anybody does something, oh, by the way, we're doing a sidewalk.
Right.
That we're going to have this choppy mess of a sidewalk.
So the one piece of it is, you know, you, you got to start somewhere. So that's one adage that goes with it. With regards to the conditional CO, a lot of times those don't hold up operations. Conditions on the COs can last, that house has lasted several years. So it's not always a big stick, so to speak. It's just something that can go out there. So the, it, it's not, we can do it, but it doesn't have as much teeth as we think it might. But it's just an option, a way to handle it.
From our standpoint with the conditional CO, I guess if it's shown on the plan and required, then it gets maintenance. Then we'll get it put in there and improve its cost assessment and the project wouldn't be able to go on maintenance theoretically. Until that's done, because it's part of a cost assessment and the construction item. So just another angle to think about when trying to condition something like that.
So that means they, they want their credit bond, they want to be able to get the money back yet until, until they install.
Correct, they wouldn't release it, it's still installed.
And then that would be incentive for them to install.
It'd also leave them incentive to, had to spend some time working with the agents to try to get a cheaper linear foot. I'm just trying to drive the process a little bit more rather than, rather than just a piece meal. Surprise you guys in the first in line, like the music stop, your stuff.
Yeah, and I, I think is the, a process and a procedure for calling in deferrals. If there's an adjacent sidewalk and they're to a deferral and there's an opportunity for something to come in, that triggers calling in a deferral. And that's something that, you know, we can make a standard procedure as we move forward.
That map's very helpful and I didn't see that map before, but that makes a big difference.
We should probably change the brown, it's kind of hard to see, but. That, yes, yep. Yep.
Cause it looks like it's been deferred there before.
It was. Yes.
Yeah, that Covenant Transport, they deferred it 10 years ago, give or take.
I, I didn't make sense to try to, but yeah, my own opinion is if we defer it, it's just. So I, I think, right, you can make a motion and then let's see what the rules.
Yeah, well, I'm, I mean, based on the conversation we've had, I'm, I'm not for necessarily to burn, but I like to conditional. And what I'm trying to get to frankly is to create the conditions not where you just go back and say, well, we'll spend the money for the sidewalk in and it meets the requirements, but to encourage you to work with the adjacent landowners and encourage the township to drive that process to get, let's call them all in and make one big sidewalk. And then it'll end up being cheaper and it'll be something much more usable down the road for the township rather than just saying, put it, put it, because you're going to go out and you have to, you know, three bids and a buy, we have the cheapest money you can find and that meets the requirement and plot it in. And then at some point, this is going to go away and then we have this deferral discussion again. So how do we drive this process if we're going to put sidewalks on?
I, I, I think as a procedure, if there's, from the planning commission, if a sidewalk is required to go in and there's an adjacent deferral, we call in that deferral. And we get the letter, I'm sorry.
Is that a recommendation we would make that the township or the board of commissioners and whoever pulls that trigger?
And I'm good with that. And, and the following is, Dan, this into your, Mark's actor carry, but is to coordinate on the side, so they know who it is, so we're getting a continued with sidewalk, not just whatever works for each of the three individuals.
Does it, does the adjacent property owners make this sidewalk lineup and stuff, but if they don't communicate, you know, they want to be some complex and then you, you have sidewalk and it doesn't connect and then it's wrapped.
Okay, so it seems like we, we want to call the sidewalk, so we, we not have. So we don't do a deferral?
I, I would think.
I'm sorry.
I would think you'd want.
For record, for record purposes, they, they made a request for deferrals, not in writing. Okay, we indicated that we need that in writing justification. If you want to move this plan forward, then it would be a recommendation to deny the request for deferral at this point. Just so we have something in the minutes, there's action that your board of commissioners can rely on, recommendation, and then just move it.
Could we also, could we also add that?
we've denied the deferral request, but also request that the township pursue the deferrals?
Absolutely, absolutely. Your recommendation could be that we are denying the deferral request. In addition to that, we are recommending that because sidewalk is required for this development, that any adjacent or adjoining developments that have had deferrals, we're recommending that the board of commissioners call those deferrals, so that a continuous sidewalk can be installed.
Thank you for making that motion, Brian. Can you hear a second? Okay, uh, will call vote?
Matthew Mokwe.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
And just to, to clarify, and I don't know, maybe even dead horse, but you guys are gonna coordinate with the, the applicant and the adjacent coordinate some sort of a get together, so they all know what's happening and they're all working together.
Yeah, and I, I, I like the language of the motion, it's probably something we can use again. And kind of formalize this process.
There was another waiver, deferral, right? Four hundred, four hundred
Oh, yeah.
And it was, yeah, we were in one of the planning departments, uh, we got to show the body of three, within four, three boundaries. Just held out with the, showing the schedule plan, and I thought we're not doing anything, I didn't pass out site. The building mission is being completely on tape there. It was just out of a blind presentation there.
Okay. So, uh, but here, a motion to grant a waiver to the SALDO requirements, three twelve, that's going to be fifteen. We're showing, required showing fifty hundred for four hundred feet around the site. By side of Diane.
One second. Right. Will call. Matthew Mokwe.
Hi.
David Wilson.
Hi.
Alan Tope.
Hi.
Bill McNair.
Hi.
Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, I want to move on to curtail the floor for this. Now, is there any are there any, um, comments, public comments? Over here, chat.
Not pertaining to this. There were, the technical difficulties, we lost some people on, on go to meeting.
Okay, the last thing would be a motion to recommend preliminary final plan approval for the board of commissioners subject to the the following conditions, plus the fourteen condition.
And then you have to do the other toes.
Regarding, going, go ahead.
Forgive me if we didn't discuss this, but, um, Pidcock lists two additional potential way, plan waivers, three twelve, twelve B twenty and twenty one.
Page B one.
Uh, page twenty two of Pidcock's, of, of the packet. Under, on page twenty two, under B general. Pidcock's listing some issues that either they show.
That's correct. Um, there's a few different things for four hundred feet of contours, there's features, um, we, uh, the features themselves, they can choose that for another waiver, I believe, that those items are, either can be shown, like I said, the features, outcrops, contours, things like that, trails, driveway sidewalks, under our comment, three and four. Um, they can choose to show them or the, the potential to ask for a waiver. All their things just were contours. The fifteen that was voted on is four hundred view of contours around the site. Uh, if you look at our comments, three and four, and in general, that's all additional, that's all additional information, so, um, again, this is something that they can choose to ask for a waiver for, or they could show.
Yeah, I think the intent was that we were requesting not show the features around, and then we just picked the only fifteen that sets a five, I don't know, to the folks do. We must have all, the waiver for all specific sections, too.
We would have no engineering objection to that, it was just, uh, it's up to the board if it shows to go through the same process, so we discussed before that, uh, to provide a written waiver letter for the board.
Remember that, I was saying, I'm sure. Getting impacted, is it?
Right now, all the work we just contained completely within the campaign area of this site. And, uh, you know, the work itself, you know, we've got to materially change the surrounding area.
I, I would, I would assume, um, noting now that sidewalk will be added, some of the, say, surrounding areas where the sidewalk would tie to the property lines, we're most likely probably to show
Yes.
Be shown.
I need to show them the one to the west side.
The east and west side, actually, right at the boundary, just to make sure the sidewalk ties in, but besides that, since everything's within the property, no engineering objection.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. Show the, one of the, the sidewalk areas, so that coordination can be done on that sidewalk. Other than that, I don't see what they use to show the other.
Okay, so what do we have to do here?
This would be a waiver of SALDO sections, uh, three twelve, twelve B twenty and twenty one. And you could probably do them in one go.
Except outside.
Yeah, except for the area that sidewalk ties in. Yes, for the board of commissioners.
That's all, yep, that's, that's for you.
Matthew Mokwe. David Wilson. Alan Tope. Bill McNair. Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly.
Hi.
Motion passes six to zero.
And then now we go to a, uh, move on to, uh, a motion to recommend, uh, the preliminary final plan approval to the board of commissioners subject to the outcome, complying with the fourteen conditions.
Yes.
Motion by, vote, second, second by Matt.
Will call vote. Matthew Mokwe. David Wilson. Alan Tope. Bill McNair. Brian Height.
Hi.
Diane Kelly. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I leave my business before the planning commission is done this evening, may I be excused? I spoke with Mr. Adams before I asked the question.
Oh, but he's the boss.
I understand.
But I, I think that I'm more than willing to stay around, if you like, to stay around, and I'm a regular socialist, who's not here. But I didn't want to, un, undo the proposed law.
That's fine, I, I think you got yourself one. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, yes. Moving on, uh, to the agenda, I have five transportation infrastructure update.
Thank you.
Uh, there was an update yesterday, uh, recently, this week. They mentioned that the Tony Street interchange panel is still on for, uh, for a lead date of twenty twenty. So, uh, this is still going, um, should twenty two, twenty's waiting, excuse me, I'm sorry, twenty twenty two, it should be an exciting project for the township, there's a lot of benefit to that. Also, they discussed the twenty two widening, fifteenth street east to three seventy eight. Again, the edge of the township, but they're wrapping up on their engineering. What they're gonna do is do the entire project, figure out the environmental problems, engineering, do the whole thing, and then try and phase that. So looking for money, they're expecting money, I guess, for the government, over the infrastructure, so that project may be coming shortly. A little further out than twenty twenty two, but something to look forward to, also, will serve to benefit the township. And so that's all I have.
Yeah, she got, are they putting, uh, barrier or walls, sound walls up, as when they're gonna wipe? To that, so
Uh, they're implementing their engineering, I'm sure that, that's definitely being discussed. So I would assume that that is going to happen, but, uh,
There's a sound step, yeah, there's a step, or Yeah, I knew that, because we talked some time ago, actually, when I was studying commissioners, and there's plenty of requirements.
Yeah.
And that's the data public, and I think that's part of their
Sure, yeah, that's what, I believe, either environmental, I think it's environmental for some reason.
There's all these boxes you have to check, and that's one of them, so. But that's also over, right away, you know, there's other issues with those as well, that possible.
That's all I have, thank, thank you. Okay, um.
Next item is the comprehensive plan and update, and we went through that, but we want to talk about the next step.
Yeah, so next steps is, um, we as staff will kind of go through these recommendations. And the plan is to come before the planning commission with a rough draft of that chapter. So the idea is to go through each section or each chapter, so we'll start, and the idea is to build upon each of, each chapter builds upon the next, getting us to a point where we can look at a future land use plan, where with, that kind of forms the basis for zoning. So Greg and I will be working together to kind of figure out how best to put that together and come before you guys, as, and we'll have to figure out when to schedule workshops. We will also probably have some internal discussions about, once we get a better feel for how big a lift this is gonna be, about making a recommendation for consultant plural potentially, um, and when some of the other consultants we used, when they can get back in and involved. So with regards to the model, um, the idea is we build each of these layers, and then we have the future land use plan, and then that could potentially get run through those models again to get the idea of what impacts there are. Should we need to go back and revisit certain things, we would have that opportunity at that point. So that's kind of the big picture of, of next steps. Um, we have a little bit of legwork to do before we can get to that next, the immediate next step of how we're gonna, how we're gonna roll it out.
Okay, you, you see it as going through each one of these recommendations, or, you know,
Yep.
what they did?
Yep.
Reconstructing or adding to, or changing or advising, let's say lifts, lift, comp plan check, or transportation, for example. Now, when, when you incorporate the model, I'm still, I'm still kind of curious to see what we're gonna do with these models, to be honest, but
So
I haven't seen that yet.
Once we have that final land use plan that the comp plan recommends, that's what would get evaluated. So we would do it very similar to how we did after the how and where should we grow? We had those inputs that came out of those two exercises. After we have this future land use plan, we'll have the inputs to get run back into that model.
We do the map before you do the model? Like, I guess, what is it, the character map of the
Yeah, so it, the two thousand nine plan calls it, I think it's future character map. Future land use plan is what MPC kind of calls them. So, yeah, same thing. So once that map's done, then, and we have all the comp plan layers that get built into that, your comprehensive plan is basically done at that point. And then you, we can take that and plug that into the model, each of the models, and kind of see what those impacts are. Everything will be great, and we won't have to go back in and look at anything, and then it can be recommended to the VOC. But we'll, we'll have to evaluate that when we get to that point. And just as a little bit of background, you know, being a, a GIS guy, and that's a lot of my experience, the idea of building each of these components on top of each other, there's mapping and geographic aspects of each of these, um, components, and we pile those on top of each other, and then what you end up with is essentially that future land use plan. So it, it will be going strategically on why we're putting certain ones first, and then as we get into it, we'll explain kind of the rationale for why we're doing, for example, resource protection first. And we'll certainly explain all of that when we get into the workshops. But the immediate step is for Greg and I to kind of distill all the information, which is really impressive, how much information we got out of this process. And it's a great stepping stone for moving forward. So we'll get that, either, you know, look for correspondence via email, or definitely by the next planning commission meeting, we'll have that recommendation on how to move forward.
Couple of questions that I just thought that came out of this, one is transportation, and then it was on there, money, money, money. There's a, a lot of things that don't seem to work, as you go through this, that there, you know, this depends on, and, and, which is, you know, with PENDOT. And we don't have any control over PENDOT, so I, I would tell you, I'm going to mine is say, we, you know, we'll do whatever PENDOT lets us do. You know, if they don't do anything, development stops, I, I don't think you can do that, but that might be my, you know, do we, do we start pushing that way? To say, you know, what we, we would like to do is with PENDOT will play us.
So I, I think some of the, there was mention of the TIP, or Transportation Improvement Plan. If there's projects that are identified in our comprehensive plan, and we also talked about the transportation plan, if things are identified in the comprehensive plan, it's more likely to get included in the TIP. Long range plan, TIP, and it, and it gets, tends to get more funding. Well
Let me ask you this, in terms of, in terms of discussion, but how do you coordinate the TIP with the, the zoning? Because in my mind, Pennsylvania, across the board, the way we do planning, planning is all local, and the road network is really state.
Yes.
And they're not all connected, and that's been our fundamental problem. And our township roads are messed up because the, the state roads are inadequate, so it causes Winchester Road is turning into a thoroughfare.
So one of the rationales to get things on the TIP, or at least in the conversation with LVPC or LVTAS, which is the transportation study, get things in, in that conversation is because that's what informs PENDOT. And if PENDOT has that information, that there's this project kind of sitting out there slated for improvement, if they come in and evaluate an HOP, so a driveway, highway, highway occupancy permit, and they see, you know, a mile down the road, there's this TIP project, they may push for some improvements towards that tip project. They may not require the developer do the entire thing, but there may be pieces of it.
Is there a way to connect that with, okay, and I, this is just a theoretical, but if the comprehensive plan says that we're gonna open one area in the township for development, maybe across from Parkland, Parkland High School, for example, how do we afford, if that's what we're gonna say in the zoning, how do we get that coordinated with tip? So that PENDOT is kind of rolling in the same direction in terms of building north-south infrastructure that's gonna be needed for that development.
Yeah, so.
On that side, how do you coordinate that? Is the plan?
Put it on the comp plan, put it on the official map, and then that puts it on PENDOT's radar. Put the, get the funding.
And I, I think that's.
And that at least gives us the best opportunity for PENDOT.
It shows PENDOT that we've thought about rather than just coming in when they call for projects to get put on the long range plan or the tip.
And we gotta get in the queue.
You gotta get in the queue. This is the municipality priority that we thought about. This is what, because you're correct. That's majority roads are PENDOT road. They don't know what's going on locally. They rely on comp plan stuff that's in there. That if they do have to call for projects, we say, hey, this has been in our plan for years. It's been for six years. So it just shows a number of degrees that you're.
And, and it kind of shows, it, it's one of the things that comes up in conversation at every development that we look at is what's the traffic impact? And then also taking a cue from LVPC, they married their comprehensive plan and their long range transportation plan together. So I, taking that cue and looking at our comprehensive plan, future land use, and tying it to transportation is hugely important because if we recommend a development, but the roadway infrastructure needs to be improved, we put that recommendation, recommendation in there with it so that PENDOT sees it and says, okay, they're planning for this to come down the pipe. We're gonna have to pay more attention to this piece.
I guess, you know, I look at the experience and I think that was before when it was underway mostly with the development. Lordville, oh, and Walbert Avenue, 55 and over. Walbert Avenue, working with PENDOT, Walbert Avenue was like, bad.
It's being recorded.
So I'm skeptical that, that, because that was part of, we didn't do something different than our previous comp plan in that development, when that development happened. And yet it was, it was, it didn't really drive any change with PENDOT with regard to Walbert Avenue. They still treated it like it was, like it was free.
Yeah, and you know, that also gets to some of the strategy of involving LVPC in the process is they have that tie with PENDOT. And involving them in the process, getting their input on how we can engage PENDOT more are all things that, you know, we've been trying to put these pieces together so that when we come up with this plan, we have a, not that it'll be a clear path to the cabbage patch, but we'll, we'll have an understanding of how the mechanisms work. And PENDOT, when they're looking at something, they can look at our plan and have a clear message as to what we are planning as a municipality, I think is the other piece of it. Because PENDOT, if they look at our plan and it's very clear that says, we need to update this road, they'll understand that, you know, sometimes things can get buried and.
The other thing that I, I need to see a whole lot of, I don't know if I saw any of it, but just as a kind of a general recommendation, but getting the state. Drive the process with regard to state funding, state and PENDOT, get them very involved.
Bring up the funding.
Right, right, the funding in particular, but even driving PENDOT.
Yeah, and that's, that's something that we can look to incorporate somewhere in the process is to get the legislators involved. Whether it's a Q and A as part of, as one of the workshops kind of thing is a great idea so that they're aware of what we're doing as a, as a township.
There's another thing I want to bring up, using that example of land across Parkland High School might also be the optimum place we want to say, let's preserve farmland. We have to figure out where that is and how do we do that with some kind of trading of development rights for not developing farms? And there's some plans for that, but.
The county has a pretty good plan. I think lower milkers probably beater.
Absolutely.
And that, but you set the pony up a lot of money because essentially they provide a land.
Yeah, my question is how does that going to be done? Because you have to pony up the money because the farmer, that's his 401K, that's his retirement. Exactly. Developers typically pay the most money.
So what it is, there's some ideas of trading those development rights for developing in other areas of the township. And I, I'm gonna admit, I don't know completely how it works, although there's a gentleman in the back that brought that up at the.
So it, it's a planner, I talk about the planner's toolbox. And it's one of the tools in the toolbox is transfer of development rights. So the idea is you have sending areas and receiving areas. The sending areas send their development rights to the receiving area. So if I have a farm that has 10 units on it, development potential of 10 units, I can sell that to a developer and that developer applies it to his project in the receiving area. So there becomes a market to preserve the farm. And there's a deed restriction and that runs with the property. Yes, so that's to straight up preserve. And so the county will buy those development rights through the farmland preservation program. And that's, there's a cap on the county, what they'll spend. And then sometimes the township can pony up some money for that to offset. And that, what they do is there's the value of the farm as is, so without development rights. So if it's 25 acres, the value of a 25 acre farm versus the value of a 25 acre development, they look at that difference and that's what they, and they pay the owner that difference. And the owner can sell it as a 25 acre farm down the road. So they're, they have, they're getting some income as the development rights. And then also if they want to get out or sell it to somebody else, keep it in farming, they can have that opportunity as well.
We might be doing something where we're zoning in other areas, receiving area that has the higher, higher concentrations.
Yeah.
And so it's less money to the township has, you know, because that's, the only thing is who's gonna, you know, they're gonna increase the taxes. Yeah, right. It is expensive. But, you know, the, the, which can do, it seems is trade. There's some programs, there's some references to some counties in Maryland that have done. And one thing that's good is that it seems to work better when property is valuable. And I think, you know, we have reasonable.
And one of the things that I, I kind of see the, the challenge is accepting or being comfortable with where we want to increase the density and how much. I think everybody understands preservation and that's kind of like a lofty goal is to preserve. But if we're talking about TDR, transfer of development rights, there has to be some place for the, that development to go. So that's something as a planning commission to start thinking about. If we're gonna take 20 units from a farm, where's that 20 units gonna go? You know, and that has to be an incentive to buy that on top of the existing development.
Exactly.
So that's, and we'll have those conversations and, you know, we'll get into details. And Greg and I have been kicking around some ideas on how we can simplify the process because a lot of times it gets very complicated. And the simpler it is, the easier it is to implement.
I mean, that's an important thing is we'll depend on it. I think that's another reservation that the township has for. Yeah. Looking, you know, can we do that? Maybe we can't, but I guess I feel now is the time that we really should be looking at because if we don't do it now, we probably won't have the opportunity to many comp plans down the road to do it because everyone we develop. So I think we're at a time now, and I think it'd be the community's desire to have some, you know, semblance of country, Indian, township.
Right. One of the things that I saw quite often through this process was targeting areas for development in areas where the infrastructure can handle it. So I think that was a recurring theme. So that would help us too. If we, if we target only a few specific areas for increasing density, we may not have to upzone if those become receiving areas. And then certainly it helps with PENDOT because we can identify transportation routes in those areas that would need additional help. And then PENDOT would be able to target their resources for that. So it's, all of this starts fitting together. So.
Let me just make sure of one thing we can do is where is there any, I'm gonna probably purposefully floor now just to make sure if anybody that has any comments or questions that they want to bring up now. That doesn't, yes?
Yes. I'll be brief. Everyone's fired. Ron Kane, 1721 Independence Court. I was hoping Rich Farm would be here, but the map, I'm gonna make a couple of comments. Get it off my chest. Mr. Talarida, is that it, Sandra White?
That was very, that's correct.
234, left of June, Section C, cover F3. A substantial fall is discharged from existing upstream basin west of Road N and Road H. A channel should be designed to convey the upstream runoff and avoid TW18W and TW17O to provide calculations not committing basic discharge and calculations. Those three units, he was very, he was very, there is a huge river coming from that retention dock. In big storms, it turns into a torrent. Our neighbor's yard is turning into a stream. So I go to the, this is the one he did.
Do you think where this is again?
This is, it's on the Independence Court. It goes up off the Independence Court, up towards the, because a huge farm field, this slope. It's on the eastern, it's on the western side.
We're getting there.
Yeah, western side of the river.
It's on the western part.
It's on a very western border, a very western border.
Western portion of the bridge farm is developed with two cul-de-sacs that we destroyed multiple times. I'll look here.
Country Crossing?
Yeah, it's above Country Crossing. So it's behind Country Crossing.
Yeah.
Right, there's the two slarge farm fields.
Right up.
Just to the east, just to the west builds.
Up here.
Down a little bit to the left. It's right there. That's where the.
Oh, there we go.
That's it. So if you look, as you come down that, they have a couple of units right there in that would be, it does turn into a torrent in storms coming out of the basin. The township has gone up, they've done a lot of organic basin, they've done a lot of work down at the bottom of your property. They've put in a lot of culverts. So his comment was, it's that anchor, he's putting two houses right in the middle of where the beam comes from. And he says, you know, a channel should be designed to convey the upstream runoff and avoid those. So I can't get an updated plan where they moved that or if they, you know, are taking care of the water. This week, this, his latest edit, we just did. A flow, he referenced the flow. He says justification is usually that flow is approved. As the approved report for that basin could not be located. So he's asking for update on the flow. I'm trying to figure out what happened to the original comments. How are they gonna get the water, I think this house is there, how are they gonna get that water?
These two houses, I think.
That's right down there.
Yeah.
Because it's the end.
Now, I'm only allowed to provide now. Providing now on the agenda, I didn't know if that would be acceptable.
Yeah, that's a little cul-de-sac.
Our, our attorney left.
They have designs to, I'm sure to collect that upstream of the property, designing a channel into a receding, we're still trying to have them show that all the questions will be done and to avoid the downstream problem. So we're still working with them, they've not completed it, but they are conscientious of it and trying, but we're still asking for more information.
Energy Foundation, no, no, we're, we're still wanting to have a conversation with the foundation here yesterday about that comment. So we're still working through it.
That may be a reason why they need to come, is they're making revisions, they have a lot to work on.
Okay, that might need to be your next comment.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. If you could come up to.
For the internet.
That might or might not be working.
Okay.
But I'll leave it to you guys.
Hey, Montanash is 17, seven points crossing. According to the website, the agenda did not change for tonight, and Rich Farm is on it. So I was just asking on behalf of people who maybe came here. And there was one person in the back who did come here. I know we didn't have 25 people in the room, but I don't know if it was online, that we could reach ones. But there was no way of knowing that it was not agenda. So I'm just going to ask if next time there's a change in agenda.
I apologize. We learned about this yesterday afternoon.
Right, you know, I didn't look at the meeting yesterday.
Yeah, and, and I understand. We've been busy and I apologize. I just did not get to it.
No, I'm not talking to anybody and just asking if it's, you know, it's just sitting there on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so we should try and get that on through the web somehow.
If it's, maybe somehow we hear announcement on the website that Rich Farm has been taken off and it's postponed until September 16th.
Yeah, that wasn't announced at the VOC meeting.
Right, but if the book wasn't there.
Yeah, it's something we, we will typically add it. The, the agenda on the calendar invite, or the calendar piece will have each one listed and a brief description. And what we can do is change that to say, remove from agenda.
When we've done it in the past, you go to the event and it'll be listed there.
And it is, we just didn't have time.
Yeah.
And it's, we will certainly do our best.
How would we handle it if they decided to pull at like 6:30?
We can't.
They say they pulled out 6:30, sorry.
Yeah.
Then we're playing you then, because that's how you usually, I'm throwing that shot.
Yeah, and usually it hits about that time because they, they get their packets on Tuesday. They take a little time to review them, then they have the discussion with their team. So usually Wednesday is about when, that's when they start. If they're gonna pull, that's when they do it. And we've had them pull, you know, Thursday afternoons. So, yeah, it's not easy.
Okay, but it's true. I mean, Rich Farm, the popper saying, people want to see. Okay, but it's true. I mean, Rich Farm offers and people want to see it, so. Okay, any more on the comp plan?
Did you want to have them think about dates?
I guess just in general, think about dates, you know, if, I'm thinking of once a month for the workshop and then, so we'll have a workshop and then a planning commission meeting. So.
I guess you could look at this kind of.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so like, start thinking about days of the week. Like we have BOC first and third, Wednesdays. This is third, Thursday, zoning hearing boards, a certain, I don't know.
Fourth Wednesday.
Fourth, fourth Wednesday.
Yeah, so, so thinking that, those terms of week and day of that week. And then if we can settle on a couple of them, we choose which one and then we make it a recurring every month until this is done.
Okay. Are you going to send an email or ask?
Yeah. Yep, because obviously what Diane is, has left and Mark is not here, so I've got to hit everyone, so.
Yep.
Right. Anything else?
Yes, courtesy of the floor. Next month, Ridge Farm, obviously. We have two others, Long's Eco Water. Perhaps some of you remember Long's Eco Water from the deep dark past on Housman, yes. Actually, in the, one of the two parcels that was going to be the three-story self-storage facility, since that one fell apart, which you may or may not have known. Those, those two parcels are for sale, Long's Eco Water, which had submitted a plan, gotten approved 10 years, oh, 15 years ago. They never, it never came to fruition. They are now coming back to basically institute almost exactly the same plan.
And which Long's Eco Water?
The one currently in Orfield.
As opposed to the, okay.
I don't know of another one.
Three on nine.
Yeah. Yeah.
The one, the commissioner.
They, that, here's family originally owned it and then he sold it.
Yeah, I understand. He also did the.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a family mess.
Yeah.
Good. We like that sort of stuff. The, the other, the other plan is also new, Tillman Duncan.
Tillman?
Duncan. Yes, the Dunkin' Donuts in. Yeah, the one at Kmart, the Kmart Plaza, they're looking to do a drive-through, so they have to do some stuff. Yes, it is. It's, it's, it's interesting what they're proposing. Maybe better off that way, yes. It's, it's going to be a challenging one, yes. So those, those are the three plans that are coming forth next month.
But this was Ridge Farm, Long's Eco Water and the Duncan.
Yep, Tillman Duncan.
Is it like a pass?
No, it's, it's the one right on the end by Tillman Street. And they're putting, they're putting a drive-through window right there on the end and, well, you'll see.
You'll see.
You know, it's a great, you get out of your party. Remember when all that was possible? And we tried to get a connection. Between the two parcels. They did quite nice.
Well, now they're going to have a drive-through there, so.
That was how we tried to bring out.